Okay, I will call the planning commission to order, please call the roll.
Mr. Harawa? Mr. McCurley?
Here.
Mr. Prince?
Here.
Mr. Staton?
Here.
Mr. Kincaid? Mayor Grossman?
Here.
Mr. Pereno?
Here.
Okay, the first item on the agenda is the approval of our March minutes. Need a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
He has just joined for the record.
Okay, and a second?
No, on the minutes, it does not reflect me as being present, so I'd like to. And it shows me voting on several things at the meeting, so if we could amend the minutes to reflect my presence at the March 3 meeting.
To that point, to Vito's point, it actually shows me listed as attending twice. And I also, I only voted once, I didn't vote for you, Vito.
No, you're right.
Okay, should we approve the minutes or amend them first, or approve them with the suggestions to make the amendments? Okay. So, please call the roll.
Mr. McCurley?
I was not at the May 3 meeting, should I abstain?
I believe you can go ahead and vote for it, voting for the meeting minutes of the approval.
Yes.
Mr. Prince?
Yes.
Mr. Staton?
Yes.
Mayor Grossman?
Yes.
Mr. Pereno?
Yes.
And me.
Oh. Mr. Harawa?
Yes.
PJ joined, Scott, I'm not sure he saw, I'm joined right up.
I did not.
And Lloyd is connecting right now.
Okay.
Okay, the first item on the agenda, Precision Cast Parts Corporation Integration Center Site and Landscape Plan. Liz?
Yep, I'm gonna share my screen, hold on just a second. Alright, so in front of you, you have the Precision Cast Parts Corporation Integration Center. The Precision Cast Parts Corporation is proposing two new facilities in Mason. Both of these facilities are west of US.
Am I in?
Yep, you're in there.
Is it, okay, all good? So both the facilities are west of US 42, just west of Ample Side, just across 42 from Ample Side. They have a facility on both the north and south side of the road. The integration center is on the south side of the road, and the tie pin building, which is next on the agenda, is on the north side of the road. So this facility on the south side of the road is, will focus on their aerospace research and development, and will contain the business's main offices. The building is approximately 170,000 square feet in size. It, the facade itself, the front facade is at the bottom of your screen. It's proposed to be constructed out of a combination of glass and metal panels and concrete, and concrete panels. On the front, the front entrance is a curved glass front. The sides and rear are constructed primarily out of concrete tilt-up panels. The proposed site as landscaping spread out, as you can see, this proposal includes street trees along the future R&amp;D road and along US 42. They're proposing the necessary screening of the parking lot and of the road frontages. We think the, the plan really complements the site, it's a very large site and a lot to cover, but this is a well-designed site.
Okay.
And with that, staff recommends approval of the site and landscape plan for the integration center, subject to the applicant coordinating with staff on the location of the mid-block crossing. They're proposing a crosswalk. Across the future road, so we're proposing that they need to, you know, coordinate that location with staff. That the driveway apron radii, they coordinate that with staff and the storm drainage design. So please let me know if you have any questions.
Obviously, you have sent them a copy of this, have you heard anything back about? Recommendations?
No, we have not heard any pushback from the conditions of approval.
Okay. And when do, if the approvals are given, when, when is this going to start construction?
I'm not aware of it that, we can have, Josh Reary with Miller Valentine is here, and he can answer that question.
Josh has raised his hand, and Josh, I will give you permission to speak. And I believe you need to unmute your microphone, can you hear us?
Did that, can you hear me?
Yep. Go right ahead.
Thank you, Josh.
Welcome, thank you for the time tonight. We are proceeding with design right now, quite expeditiously, and Precision Cast Parts Corporation would like to break ground absolutely as quickly as we can. Realistically, given the, you know, finishing design, permitting, et cetera, assuming we get approved with you guys tonight. I would like to see us break ground maybe late July, first part of August.
Okay, good, and you have received the, from the engineering department, the comments, and is there anything that you disagree with, or?
No, sir, we, in fact, I've talked with the gentlemen that are on from, from PCC as well, and, and no, we don't disagree, and we will work with city staff as we need to.
Okay. Thank you. Planning Commission members, do you have a question?
No, I don't have questions, I would just like to say it's really nice to get a, a well-detailed package to planning commission. This is much more detailed than many companies submit, and I appreciate that.
Absolutely, I agree with you, Don. Okay. Okay, any questions?
No.
Yeah. Motion?
I'll move the adoption of PC 2020-006 SP slash LP.
Seconds.
Okay, motion, second? I'm sorry. Mayor, Mayor, did you have a question?
I did, it was about the sidewalk. Thank you, by the way, I can't figure out how to raise my hand other than raising my hand, so I need to learn that, I apologize. On the sidewalk, and I, forgive me for not knowing this off the top of my head, did we have a, do we have a bike path plan along 42 in that area?
I'll answer that, the bike path is actually on the Ample Side Meadow Side, the bike path is already there for the Ample Side development. So the fee in lieu of is for the sidewalk, and that would go in, what we've talked with the applicant about was when we do have some sidewalk connectivity along 42 to the south, most likely would be the first portion. We would have, we would take that fee in lieu of and apply that and construct that sidewalk along the frontage.
Great.
Yes, we, there will be a crosswalk across State Route 42 at the intersection of the new R&amp;D road, which lines up with Ample Side Drive to the east. So pedestrians will be able to cross the road there and get on that bike path, which will, essentially, that bike path will connect, or actually does connect to the sports park right now. You can actually get to the sports park, and then by 2023, we'll have that bike path connected from the sports park into the Mason network. Which includes all the bike paths that run by the municipal center here and all throughout town, so, great question, yes, that is, is installed on the other side, and we will have the sidewalk component issued when we have a connectivity to the south.
Great, that is, that is wonderful news, thank you, thank you, Mr. Staton.
Thank you. Now, are there any, any other questions? Okay, please call the roll.
Mr. Prince?
Yes.
Mr. Staton?
Yes.
Mr. Kincaid? I thought he joined.
Yes. Yeah. Lloyd, yeah.
Yes. Mayor Grossman?
Yes.
Mr. Pereno?
Yes.
Mr. Harawa?
Yes.
Mr. McCurley?
Yes.
Did you get his move?
Yes, we did.
Okay. The next item, Precision Cast Parts Corporation TI Pin SPS Technology Site and Landscape Plan. Liz?
You, Mr. Chair? Move that to the center. I'm moving down, so this is their second proposed, the second proposed PCC building. This is the tie pin building on the north side of the proposed R&amp;D Parkway. This building is approximately 140,000 square feet in size, so it is slightly smaller than the building to the south. This building will primarily focus on the aerospace, aerospace part manufacturing, where the, kind of the office and the research and development is in the building to the south. This proposed building, the front facade is a combination of brick and glass windows with another curved front glass front entrance. We have asked that the two PCC buildings align the look of their buildings a little bit more than what they are currently showing. So the elevations of these buildings may change slightly from what you see here till the final product. We asked them to kind of coordinate their materials and design slightly more than what they're currently proposing, and they've both acknowledged that they'll, they'll work on that. So just wanted to kind of give everyone a heads up that the actions may change slightly from here. The site itself, they are proposing, the, you have a, the kind of the rear entrance with their parking lot. They're proposing an eight-foot fence around their rear storage and loading area. A portion of that fence is located in the front yard of the property. The applicant will need to get a variance for the fence in the front yard from the zoning board of appeals, along with the height. Our code currently limits the height of fences to six feet in height, so the variance will be for the location of the fence and the eight feet in height of that fence. The applicant has identified that they will proceed with that route and ask for that variance. Again, the landscape plan for this site includes a variety of mounding and shrubs and trees throughout to help screen both the parking lot and the building from 42. Once again, we think this is a well-designed site, and are excited about this company coming to Mason. With that, staff recommends approval of the site and landscape plan, subject to the applicant either revising the height location to meet requirements or applying for a variance, as we discussed. And second, to coordinate with staff on the location of the mid-block crossing, the sidewalk along 42 frontage, and the driveway apron radii. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Okay, any questions for Liz? So is the applicant here tonight, or?
Yeah.
Okay. Is that Josh?
Actually, I believe it's Scott Spear, anybody from, to type in, would like to answer any questions, could you raise your hand, please? On the, yeah, okay.
That's Scott Spear, yeah.
I will allow Scott to speak. Scott, if you, there you go, can you hear us?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Very, very loud and clear.
Awesome. We are on a parallel track with the, the schedule of the integration center, and we are proceeding into design. And we are, I'm in the process of making the application for Board of Zoning Appeals to, on the variance for the fencing that, that we need. And like I said, we are, we are on a parallel track, so probably by the end of May, we're hoping to have applications ready for site work.
Okay. Planning Commission members, do you have any questions for Scott or for Liz? Don't see any, so. Could I have a motion?
Motion to, to approve PC 2020-11 SP LP.
We have a motion, we have a second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Staton?
Yes.
Mr. Kincaid? Yes. Mayor Grossman?
Yes.
Mr. Pereno?
Yes.
Mr. Harawa?
Yes.
Mr. McCurley?
Yes.
Mr. Prince?
Yes.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, Scott, and good luck, and we look forward to seeing you here again.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the next item. Zips Car Wash Site and Landscape Plan. Okay, Liz?
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Zips Car Wash is proposing a new car wash facility on Kings Mill Road. This property is Lot 4B of the Kings Mill Plaza subdivision, it's just directly east of the multi-tenant strip center. That was constructed just, I believe, last year, and this is across from Mason Grand. The proposed car wash is just over 4,000 square feet in size. It is a drive-through automatic car wash that, you know, has one, one tunnel that you will drive through. The proposed building is a combination of brick and stone to complement the other buildings in, that are already constructed within this development. It also includes overhead doors for the entrance and exit of the car wash, along with a storefront window for the office component of the building. The landscape plan includes a variety of trees and shrubs for the necessary screening in and around the property. For the interior parking lot islands, they are proposing some longer, skinnier islands that exceed our maximum landscape island size. The landscape ordinance limits landscape islands to 350 square feet in size. We understand as staff that the need for these kind of long skinny islands due to the tightness and size of this lot, and the organization of both the parking spaces and the building. So we don't have a concern with that variance to our landscape ordinance. You'll see the parking spaces in the middle of the site have vacuums. Part of the Zips Car Wash model is that you have free vacuums with use, and so those parking spaces all will have vacuums, I believe. Additionally, the applicant has submitted for a variance to the ZBA for their sign package, due to their requirements for a car wash to have the menu board signs for pricing. They have received approval of that sign package with some modifications. In addition to what ZBA approved, staff would additionally request that planning commission require the applicant to construct their monument sign with a brick base consistent with the other monument signs in the Kings Mill Plaza development. I did not include their signs. Lastly, the property is subject to the State Route 741 Streetscape Beautification Fund. Staff has notified the applicant of this, that they will be, that their portion of that will then negate their need to install the street trees and road frontage landscaping. That will be taken care of by the Streetscape Beautification. So with that, staff approval of the site and landscape plans, subject to the applicant finalizing the Streetscape Beautification Fund payment with staff, finalizing a cross-access agreement with Lot 4A. And adding a brick base, the site's monument sign, to be consistent with the other, other monument signage in the development. Let me know if you have any questions.
I didn't see the sign plan, so what is it, just girders, metal girders?
I do have it, if I can.
Oh, was in the back of the. Okay, that was.
So have little menu, if you can see.
Yeah, okay, I did see that, I.
Yeah. So Mason signs typically have either a stone or a brick base, we do require that, so we would just ask that they, you know, be consistent with, you know, are the, kind of the typical signs in Mason, and the signs that are currently in this.
In this development, yeah, I understand. Okay, I think it's a great idea. Okay, planning commission members, questions for Liz?
I have a question.
Sure.
I was having a difficult time discerning from the plans. Will there just be a main sign advertising the car wash on one side of the building, or will it be visible on multiple sides?
Are you talking about a freestanding sign or building signage?
Building signage.
For building signage, they will be permitted one sign on the front. I don't believe they asked for any sign variances for additional building signage, but I'd have to confirm that with the variance package. Applicant is on, on the line, and he might be able to confirm that as well.
The applicant here to raise their hand, and I'll give you first permission to speak. All right. Mark, go ahead and unmute. Can you hear us?
Yep, I can hear you.
Okay, go ahead.
We can hear you, Mark, go ahead. All right, yeah, I mean, right now, we just have the sign on the front of the building, and then the monument sign out front by the street. Okay, and planning commission was discussing putting a brick base on the monument sign? And did you have a comment about that? No, we normally do that anyways, to, to, you know, make the sign the same look as the, the building, so that's not an issue. Okay. Any questions for Mark? Questions for Liz? Okay. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve PC 2020-006 SP slash LP. With the staff notes.
Okay. And a second?
Second?
We have a motion, we have a second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Kincaid? Yes. Mayor Grossman?
Yes.
Mr. Pereno?
Yes.
Mr. Harawa?
Yes.
Mr. McCurley?
Yes.
Mr. Prince?
Yes.
Mr. Staton?
Yes. Okay, thank you. The next item, Mason Christian Village Building Addition Final PUD.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mason Christian Village is proposing an approximately 10,000 square foot addition on, I guess it's their west-east, east side of their building. They're also requesting a minor, major modification determination, and this is an approval of a final development plan as Mason Christian Village is located in a PUD. The addition, again, is approximately just over 10,000 square feet, and 27 feet in height. The purpose of the addition is for a new worship center and auditorium. The new, the new area is shown kind of in this brown area, that's, it's being constructed on existing grass area. So with that, they'll be constructing, you know, kind of redoing some grass area and building four new handicap parking spaces out front. The proposed exterior of the addition will match the existing building, it'll be a mix of brick and lap siding and concrete panels. To be consistent with the existing design of, of the Mason Christian Village. They will also be constructing or adding 13 new trees, they'll have to take out a few trees and shrubs with the location of the new addition, and they'll be replacing that with 13 new trees around the new building. So that staff recommends approval of the final PUD.
Okay, Liz, is the reason for the major minor modification, the size of the building, or the fact that we have a church addition in there, what's the reason?
Anytime we have a final PUD, like a new site plan for a PUD, it's planning commission's role to make that determination, whether it's a minor or a modern, minor or major modification. If it's a minor modification, planning commission can approve it. If it's a major modification, they have to re-go through the full PUD process. So we put that minor, major modification determination on every final PUD, as it's planning commission's role to make that determination. Staff would recommend that this is a minor modification, it's a pretty small addition in comparison to their overall site, and it's not changing their, you know, their overall use of the building or, or whatnot. But it's just kind of the standard language we put on it when we, we have a PUD in front of you.
Okay. Planning Commission members, anybody want to make a, make a, have a discussion or make a motion?
I will move that we approve PC 2020-12 FD.
Do we have to determine, determine whether it's a major, minor?
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right, I'm out of line.
Go ahead.
Well, I, I also would recommend that we consider it a minor modification. It doesn't seem to change the character of the site at all, so, and it's a small percentage, so that's my position.
Okay. And I agree with you. A second? Can we have a motion? We have a second, please call the roll.
Mayor Grossman?
Yes.
Mr. Pereno?
Yes.
Mr. Harawa?
Yes.
Mr. McCurley?
Yeah.
Mr. Prince?
Yes.
Mr. Staton?
Yes.
And Mr. Kincaid? Yes.
Okay. No, we need a motion to adopt. That was a motion to minor, major, minor, so.
I can make that motion.
It's minor.
No, it is a minor, but we now need a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion to approve PC 2020-002 FD slash LP with staff notes.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Pereno?
Yes.
Mr. Harawa?
I'm realizing I said the wrong PC, I had already flipped to the next one. Sorry. Can we start that over, I make a motion to approve PC 2020-012 FD. With staff notes.
Second.
Can we have a motion, second, please call the roll.
Mr. Pereno?
Yes.
Mr. Harawa?
Yes.
Mr. McCurley?
Yes.
Mr. Prince?
Yes.
Mr. Staton?
Yes.
Mr. Kincaid? Yes. Mayor Grossman?
Yes.
Okay, the next item, Kings Mills Square Final PUD and Landscape Plan. Liz?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Kings Mills Square Final PUD and Landscape Plan is in front of you tonight for approval. If you remember, the concept PUD was reviewed by Planning Commission in August 29, on August 29th of 2019. The final PUD application is substantially similar to the concept PUD. It includes three new buildings that are shown in brown on the site plan in front of you. Two are hotels, and one is a proposed drive-through restaurant. The PUD boundaries also include the existing Perkins Restaurant and the restaurant use behind Perkins that are adjacent to 741. But those are existing, there are changes are proposed to those buildings. The three new buildings, again, there'll be two hotels and the drive-through restaurant. It also includes new parking areas and new pedestrian paths to connect the uses. The final PUD application includes the detailed site layout, a landscape plan of the buffer areas and. a landscape plan of the buffer areas and the kind of the property perimeter and surrounding areas and the preliminary grading and utility plans. We also have the giraffe covenants restrictions. We did realize after we sent out the packets that we did not provide the giraffe covenants restrictions in your packets. If you would like to see those, we can forward those to you. They are pretty standard covenants restrictions, and we are still finalizing those with the applicants. We need to finalize our Streetscape agreement with them as well as a few other minor details, but no substantial changes are proposed to those covenants. There are a few items that the applicant is proposing with this final P U D plan that do not currently meet our P U D standards or landscape requirements. Those include the proposed dumpster and parking lot for the Avid Hotel, which is the Southern Hotel, do not meet the required 20-foot P U D peripheral setback. The existing parking lot, which is within the P U D boundaries, does not include landscape islands as required for our P U D requirements for landscape islands. And the southern edge of the parking lot for the Avid Hotel does not include the required vehicular use screening requirement of a 10-foot wide buffer with trees and a 30-inch screen. Due to kind of the unique and weird shape of this lot and the existing site features, staff agrees that compromising on some of these regulations would be positive and not detrimental to the development. With the location of the Avid Hotel and it backing up to the rear portion of the BP gas station, having that dumpster enclosure in the parking lot meet that 20-foot setback does not seem to be the most important setback to meet due to what the adjacent property and what it's a budding. Additionally, staff would recommend that Planning Commission approve a waiver to the landscape buffer requirements along the southern edge that is butts another hotel to the south. They are proposing a pedestrian walk in that area, and we think that pedestrian connection is important to provide a safe pedestrian path from the people staying at the hotel to the other hotel and also the proposed restaurant within the P U D. We would recommend, and these are in our condition of approval, that the applicant cut in new landscape islands in the existing parking lots so that the existing parking lot meet our P U D landscape requirements for landscape islands every 12 spaces. So we think that would make a big difference in the overall look and feel of the development if the existing parking lot can be brought up to standards. And we would also request that a new pedestrian connection be built connecting these hotels to 741. There's not currently a safe pedestrian path connecting these to 741. And based on the existing width of the access road, there is sufficient room to construct a sidewalk along the Perkins side of that roadway. So we would recommend that Planning Commission ask for that connection. So with that, staff recommends approval of the final P U D and landscape plan subject to the applicant revising the site layout and design to include that pedestrian path that leads from the three buildings to Kingsmill Road, 741, and install new parking lot landscaping to meet the landscaping ordinance requirements on the existing parking lot, to revise the Development Traffic Impact Study and provide the revised study for review and approval by staff. And lastly, to coordinate with staff to finalize the final plat for the P U D and the covenants restrictions for the P U D, which includes the Streetscape Beautification Program. So let me know if you have any questions about that.
Okay, Liz, if we approve, if this is approved by Planning Commission, and your comments in there suggest approving a waiver to the landscape buffer requirements, if this is approved, do we need to add that separately or is it part of this document that we're approving?
We incorporated it into. I guess if you approve this final P U D, that will approve them not requiring to build that because they're not proposing to have that landscaping. And so that'll be carried forward to when they come in. They'll still have to come in for final P U D and landscape approval for each individual site.
Okay.
We'll kind of record those variances as part of this final P U D approval, and then we'll make sure that those are reflected in the site plans that come next.
Okay. Planning Commission members, any comments, questions?
The applicant is here too.
Okay, good. And a question for the applicant?
Is it known what the restaurant is?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Rob, do you know?
Hi, this is Rob Painter with our VP Engineering, and the restaurant is unknown at this time.
Okay, any questions for Rob or for Liz? Mayor?
Thank you. Does the applicant have any issues with the recommendations made by staff? Has that all been worked out?
We are fine with these recommendations. We've looked at them, we've talked to Liz, we think we can make them work, so we are fine with them.
Great. This was a very nice presentation as well for us. This is a great Planning Commission packet this time. Thank you for that.
Yes. Okay, anybody else? Done, I need a motion then to approve?
Motion to approve PC 2020-002 F D slash L P with staff recommendations.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any other questions? Please call the roll.
Mr. Hunter Law?
Yes.
Mr. McCurley?
Yes.
Mr. Prince?
Yes.
Mr. Staten?
Yes.
Mr. Kincaid?
Yes.
Mayor Grossman?
Yes.
Mr. Pereno?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, and thank you, Rob.
Thank you.
The next item, Dilly Subdivision Replat.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The proposed Dilly Subdivision Replat, this is a downtown lot on West Main Street, located at 612 West Main Street. The applicant currently owns four properties that are all, I believe, 25 feet wide and just looking to consolidate those. One, there's an existing house and garage on the property, as you can see. So they're just looking to consolidate these four lots into one, and the proposed lot does conform with the R4 zoning district, which this lot is located in. So with that, staff recommends approval of the replat. Pretty straightforward.
Okay, any questions? Motion?
Motion to approve PC 2020-007 R P.
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you, we got a motion, we have a second, call the roll.
Mr. McCurley?
Yes.
Mr. Prince?
Yes.
Mr. Staten?
Yes.
Mr. Kincaid?
Yes.
Mayor Grossman?
Yes.
Mr. Pereno?
Yes.
Mr. Hunter Law?
Yes.
Okay, the next item, Western Row Road Dedication Plaid.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This dedication plat is for portions of Western Row and Butler Warren Road that are adjacent to the proposed Wahi Town Homes. I believe, I forget the actual name of the town home element that Jay Betty is proposing on this property. The dedication plat is to dedicate portions of the roads in conformance with the thoroughfare plan. There's also proposed roundabout at the corner of Western Row Road and Butler Warren Road. The plat will dedicate all the necessary easements for that roundabout as well. So with that, please let me know, staff recommends approval of the dedication plat, and let me know if you have any questions.
Well, my question is that there's a few houses along Butler Warren that this would interfere with their front yard. What's going to happen to the rest of it? Or is this just only for the roundabout?
So this lot here, the lot that's basically the rectangular shape that's not included is that one house that sits on Butler Warren Road, right there. And then the other single-family house that sits on this lot, accesses off Western Row, and that existing house, I think Jay's current plan is to leave that existing house there and then develop on the back eastern portion of this. So that house will stay, but that's really the only two homes that will be affected.
Okay, all right, all right, thank you. Okay, any questions? Okay, could I have a motion?
I'll move approval of PC 2020-008 D P, please. Second.
Motion and a second, call the.
Mr. Prince?
Yes.
Mr. Staten?
Yes.
Mr. Kincaid?
Yes.
Mayor Grossman?
Yes.
Mr. Pereno?
Yes.
Mr. Hunter Law?
Yes.
Mr. McCurley?
Yes.
Okay, recognize our visitors, how many visitors do we have?
The, and it's Mr. Betty. Mr. Betty wants to speak, we can give you permission to speak. That is the only person in the meeting. So all the high school kids must have either got a waiver in the government class or don't have to attend a meeting. So those are normally our recognition of visitors at these meetings. So, Mr. Betty, if you do want to talk, I guess, raise your hand. I know you were here for the last item on the agenda, and if you do want to speak, let me know. If not, I don't see any other visitors here.
I want to welcome Liz Fields back to the team.
Thanks.
Good to see you.
Thanks, you too.
Okay. Our next meeting is Wednesday, June 3, 2020, and I'm assuming we'll be doing it the same way?
Yeah, right now, this is a Wednesday, so just kind of keep that in mind. ICRC, who helps us stream these live on YouTube, or I think that's what they do on the internet. They're very busy on Monday and Tuesdays, so that's why we're doing this on a Wednesday evening in June. There's still hope that we may do this in person. More to come on that, and staff will be in contact with you if that changes. But right now, I think it's safe to say the plan on the format we're doing right now, which I think worked out okay tonight, and thanks, everybody, for attending and being patient with the new process of Zoom meetings, so.
Yes, thanks, everybody. This went better than I thought, and maybe it'll get even better, so.
Yeah, nice job, staff, thank you for accommodating all of us.
Yes, one very well, thank you.
Yes, I agree, I agree.
Dick, would you share the meeting date again for the next meeting?
Yes, it is March, it's June 3, 2020, Wednesday, June 3.
June 3, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Okay.
For Chair.
Okay, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Call in favor, aye. We are adjourned, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.